Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:32 PM. We will call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission. Commissioner Lopez is not here, but will be joining us in just a few minutes, and everyone else is present. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of this day and opportunity to serve. As we gather to make decisions that affect our city, we ask for your wisdom to lead us and your peace to study us. Remind us that while we plan and prepare, you are the one that holds it all together. Help us let go of what is beyond our control and to trust that you are working even in the unseen. Guide our hearts, our words, and our actions that all the decisions made today bring you honor to you and good to all of the people that we serve. Amen.
And now the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
None?
None.
None.
All right. Okay, item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee, or community recognition. Item 3A, mayor's announcements. Mayor?
Just a brief announcement that we are coming on to the holiday of 4th of July, and the city will be hosting its Freedom Fest that we do every year. It'll be at Long Sea Hill Park on 4th of July, on Friday, and it starts at what time, Calista? At 5:00 PM. And so it is going to be a wonderful event, live music, food, fun for the kids, and the entire family, and of course, absolutely at no cost to the community. So we invite all of you all out to celebrate the holiday. And that's all I have.
Okay. Item 3B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez?
Mayor, just as an FYI, all city offices will be closed on July 4th in observance of the holiday. Also, we will be having a sworn-in ceremony for Chief Alviad tomorrow at the auditorium at 6 o'clock. So he will be officially sworn in as chief of police, and including, I think it's eight additional police officers that are joining the force. So if you have time, please come by and for that ceremony. And then market day is a Saturday from 9 to 3. So that's all I have.
Okay. Item 3C, city commission members' announcements. Commissioners?
I just want to pass my condolences to the family of Mr. J.J. Gonzalez, who recently passed away, a very prominent citizen here in Harlingen.
Commissioner Ms. Mark? Announcements?
Just echo Commissioner Kansley's remarks. Thank you. Matt?
Okay. Item four is proclamation, presentation of awards. 4A, we have the Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Oh, my goodness. It's a baby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, we've done something a little different. We have brought Taka, who is about a five-week-old kitten. He came to the shelter when he was about a week old, and luckily, they had a nursing mom who was willing to accept him, and so she has nursed him for the last four weeks. And so he's ready for foster, and so he's available at the animal shelter. He is a little guy, but he will keep growing. He's looking for his forever home. Anybody who's interested in Taka or any of the other animals at the animal shelter is welcome to go by 1106 Markowski or give them a call at 956-216-5250. And just as a side note, this Saturday from 1 to 6, they will be having, their all adoptions will be half off. So everyone's welcome to go by the shelter and visit Taka or any of the other animals that are there.
Awesome. And so, A.J., any events coming up that the community needs to know about?
I don't think we're going to have anything this weekend, but I know that we're going to have Petco next weekend.
Next week?
Yeah, in Wessex.
Okay. And I know you just had the walk-ons, painting.
The walk-on, yeah, the painting with puppies. That was, we had a good turnout, and everything went really well with that.
Wonderful.
We are having some conversations with some other businesses, but we don't have anything finalized yet, and as soon as we get those finalized, then we will absolutely get those out to everybody.
Great. And we invite everyone to follow the Harlingen Animal Shelter page that posts photos of these adorable puppies and kittens and dogs for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, four.
That's so tidy.
4B, we have a presentation of certificate of recognition for Morgana Elizabeth Rodriguez Marine.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. So our certificate of recognition is presented to Morgana Elizabeth Rodriguez Marine in honor of your outstanding achievements in the world of chess and your remarkable representation of the city of Harlingen. At just eight years old, your extraordinary talent, discipline, and dedication have brought pride and positive attention to our community. Your accomplishments are nothing short of inspirational. First place at the TCA 2025 South Texas Chess Championship, South Texas State Champion, first place in the 2024 Girls State Championships, first place at the RGV Girls Championships, and awarded the esteemed candidate master title by the Texas Chess Association. These accomplishments have earned you the ranking of number one girl in Texas for your age group and number eight nationally, making you a true trailblazer and role model for young chess enthusiasts, especially girls in our city and beyond. Your dedication and excellence serve as a shining example of what hard work and passion can achieve, and we are proud to recognize and celebrate you as a symbol of promise and inspiration for the future. So if you'd like to come.
Why don't you, yes, why don't you take the mic down and have her stand over to the side?
Put it over here. Okay, I can barely see over it, too. Here, if you want to face this way. I know it's a little hard.
We love you, Morgana. So tell me, is it Morgana, or Elizabeth, or Liz, or?
Morgana.
Morgana. Well, it is a beautiful name, and don't feel pressured to say anything. You do enough. You don't need any speeches. You don't need any words because your actions speak much louder than any potential words. We are so incredibly proud of you. You have made Harlingen proud, the state of Texas proud, and the nation proud. And how old are you?
Eight.
At eight years old. You are going places, young lady. We would love to take a picture with you, and we are so incredibly happy and proud of you. Thank you for making Harlingen shine.
And if we can take a picture.
One more, three, two. Got it.
Do we have anyone else gathered that wants to take a picture with her?
There you go.
There we go.
Wonderful.
He's also just clear himself.
There we go. Ready, and three, two, one. There's a. And ready, over here, and three, two, one. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item is a presentation of certificate of recognition for Ms. Lupita Muniz.
So our certificate of recognition is presented to Lupita Muniz in recognition of decades of service, educational leadership, and civic contributions to the city of Harlingen. Born and raised in Harlingen, Texas, Lupita Muniz is proud graduate of Harlingen High School, class of 1965, and a 1968 graduate with honors from Pan American College. A devoted educator for over five decades, Mrs. Muniz taught at multiple HCISD schools, church groups, and adult education programs. Her passion for environmental education earned her the title of Outstanding Environmental Teacher of the Year by Governors Bill Clements, Ann Richards, and Mark White, and she contributed state-level curriculum for the Texas Water Commission. Mrs. Muniz is also certified educator of Keep Texas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful, and played a pivotal role in Harlingen's recognition as an all-American city in 1992. In 2014, she was awarded the prestigious Yellow Rose of Texas by the Texas Senate for her service to the community. As a community leader, she served on or supported countless organizations, including the American Heart Association, American Diabetes Association, La Posada Refuge, Valley Baptist Foundation, Junior League of Harlingen, and many others. Her longtime service to the Harlingen Boys and Girls Club, including as a golf tournament director for 25 years, exemplifies her dedication to the youth of our community. In 2023, she was inducted into the Harlingen Walk of Fame by the Harlingen Rotary Club, and Mrs. Muniz's service to the city includes decades of involvement with the Community Development Block Grant Board, Harlingen Library Board, Harlingen Museum Board, Harlingen Proud, Parks and Recreation Board, and the Arts and Entertainment Board. Her legacy continues to shape Harlingen for the better. With deep appreciation, we honor your enduring contributions and thank you for your steadfast dedication to our city. Mrs. Muniz, if you'd like to come up.
I know you all have a big agenda, so I'm going to try to keep it really short. But I wanted to thank, first of all, God for allowing me to serve this city that I just love so much. And secondly, my husband, because he allows me to go around to meetings and is satisfied with a bologna sandwich while I'm out at the meetings, and he rarely complains. I want to thank the mayor, the Honorable Mayor Norma Sapuda, for allowing me to be here, and our city commissioners for all the work that they do. And I want to commend you for the perfect timing. It's almost 4th of July, and it's a wonderful time to acknowledge community service because our American dream was built on service and on volunteerism and caring for others. And I think that's one of the things that we need to educate our children to do, to love their community, to love the police department, to be proud of the firemen, to love their mayor, to support their community. That is so very important. And that's why I'm glad that some of my grandchildren are here and that other children, such as our little chess player. I think it's so important that we model for them. I also want to thank everyone that came to support me because I know you have very busy lives, and it makes me understand that all this service that I did for this community is of value. I want to tell you that I was pregnant with my first son in 1973 when I first joined the Community Development Block Grant. I've seen a lot of city managers, I've seen a lot of, well, several mayors, and I've seen a lot of people come and go on that board. We have one of the finest boards right now, and I'm leaving with the satisfaction of knowing that young people are taking over. Young people are starting to get more involved in our community. And one of them was Daniel. Daniel used to be the president of the Community Development Block Grant, and now he's the city commissioner. Thank you, those of you that came to support me, and if you please will come up whenever we take a picture, I would love that memory in my book. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, well, Mrs. Muniz, thank you so much for, that's a lifetime of service and everything that you have done for the citizens of Harlingen, for our community. You know, it is a testament to just all of the people that are here to support you, to just a reflection of your hard work over 1970?
Fifty-two years.
Fifty-two years. That is phenomenal, and it's great that we have young leaders that are here today to just to see the impact that one person can have in their community, because it really is something to be said for someone that shows up every day, all the time, and with an open heart and willing to help their community. And so we thank you. I know that the city commission was proud to recognize you today, and I know that Commissioner Lopez really, he is on his way, but he's had this in my ear for a while, so please know that he is a supporter of yours and is very, very incredibly honored that you're here today. And I was hoping that if I talked a little bit longer, he might walk up the stairs, but he hasn't walked up the stairs. But know that, you know, he is very, very proud of everything that you've done. So yes, we'd love to take a picture, and there are so many of you here in the audience to support Ms. Muniz. Please join us as we take our photo.
Also, I want to say that it does start at home. My son Bobby is working as a school board member, and my son Michael is also a community leader with a lot of nonprofits that he's worked with, United Way and the Boys and Girls Club, that are so, so wonderful in this community. We couldn't do without the Boys and Girls Club. So thank you all that are here.
Okay, we're going to move on to an item 4D, presentation of certificate of recognition for Temple Beth Israel.
So our next certificate of recognition is presented to the congregation Temple Beth Israel in recognition of its 75th anniversary. In honor of 75 years of unwavering service, leadership, and spiritual guidance to the Harlingen community as the only Jewish religious institution in the city's history. Temple Beth Israel has stood as a beacon of faith, inclusion, and civic responsibility since its founding in 1949. With deep roots and forward-looking spirit, the congregation serves as a warm and welcoming center for Jewish life, offering religious services, education for all ages, and meaningful community engagement. From its historic temple at 1702 East Jackson Avenue, built by the founding families whose descendants still worship there, Temple Beth Israel has cultivated a proud legacy of civic involvement. Its members have contributed greatly to Harlingen's growth and vitality as business leaders, educators, health professionals, philanthropists, and public servants. Their impact is reflected in the city's own Walk of Fame, where at least eight members of its terrorist congregation are honored among Harlingen's most influential citizens. Under the leadership of Rabbi Frank Joseph, it is devoted board, Temple Beth Israel continues to embrace the values of faith, learning, justice, and interfaith friendships. It remains a treasured and vital part of Harlingen's cultural and spiritual fabric. With gratitude and deep respect, we proudly recognize the congregation Temple Beth Israel on its 75th anniversary. Rabbi, if you'd like to come up.
Well, thank you very, very much for the recognition. We want to thank you, the council members, the mayor, for all that you do on behalf of the community of Harlingen. You have enriched and enhanced the community beyond words, and the heart, in America, the heart of America is the community. That is the heart of America. And so thank you for making Harlingen the wonderful place, welcoming place, inclusive place that it is, and we're very, very, very honored and grateful today to be here. I want to say thank you very much to Sheila Greenfield, who has been here since the inception of the congregation in 1949, 1950. And Sheila Greenfield is a wonderful educator who devoted years and years and years of her life to educating our youth. And I want to say thank you very much to our president, Richard Forson, who has been an educator for 47 years. We all know, teaching takes a tremendous amount of effort, time. It is not a nine-to-five job. It isn't around-the-clock job, and yet, the fantastic teacher that you are, you still devote your time and your energy and your talents on behalf of the congregation and community. So I want to say thank you very much to you. Thank you very much to you. Thank you very, very much.
Don't leave, Rabbi. We just want to thank you for taking the time to be here today, and I want to thank you for extending an invitation to all of us to celebrate with you. I know that Commissioner Bettis was able to go, and he has been just saying how wonderful the experience was, and we think that you are here and providing these opportunities for our community as well. And you're such a big supporter of Harlingen, and so I personally want to just thank you for that.
Thank you.
And we'd love to take a photo with you.
While they're getting ready, I'm going to have to do a little, Daniel is here now to be with us, but I also wanted to say, I was surprised that my son, John Matthew, and his three little boys came down to see me for this recognition. And John Matthew is a lawyer like you, Norma, in San Antonio. And so there's so many things that come out of service. You all know, because each one of you is serving our community, and know that there's rewards that cannot be done with money. So I'd like to recognize my son, John Matthew, for doing such a wonderful surprise, and such a, just a wonderful thing. Thank you again. We're going to be leaving, but, because we have some plans, but thank you for all your service. I know what it's like and how it can be a very thankless job, but you guys are doing a great, great job. Thank you.
If you want to just wait immediately, we'd like to take a picture with him. We're done here.
Okay, we'll do the phone first. Okay, ready? And three, two, one. One more, and three, two, one. And we'll get that right here, and then right here. So ready, and three, two, one. One more, and three, two, one. Back.
One last picture.
Picture. Miss.
I'm sorry.
No, but they want to get a picture.
Okay, over here, and three, two, one. And one more. Three, two, one. Okay, and we got it. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, next. Okay, item 4E, the chamber is not available, they're not here today, so we're going to go ahead and pass for the next meeting.
Okay.
But we're going to go ahead and go with item 5, citizens' communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We have one.
Okay.
Only, and it's Mr. Robert Lefwitch. All right.
Not on 9 East Parkway. I just wanted to come because obviously, there's a big issue in town now, and it has to do with nepotism. Mayor, I think you know what I'm talking about. Your uncle's been a parent and is getting paid $20,000 a month at the Harlingen Waterworks. And surprisingly, to no one's surprise, you were involved in the hiring after the firing of the last manager of the Waterworks Utility. Of course, if you look at the state of Texas, there's the local government code with criminal ramifications for nepotism. There's also the employee policy for the city of Harlingen, there's the charter, there's, you know, just a lot of things that dictate that nepotism is wrong. And I've got some issues to point out. First off, as I mentioned, he's making $240,000 a year, so I've gone to the TML website for a survey for utility district directors. The city of Amarillo has 200,000 people, and they only pay their director 186,000. Wichita Falls has 106,000 people, and they only pay their director 148,000. Beaumont has 118,000 people, and they only pay theirs 140. We're paying a utility director $100,000 a year, more than the man that left nine or 10 months ago. Now, if that's not favoritism, I don't know what is. And so I've downloaded something that somebody's done, an impact study of nepotism in the workplace. First off, there's reduced employee morale and motivation, can be perceived as unfair and increased workplace conflicts, decreased productivity and efficiency result in a talent drain, high potential employees who perceive a ceiling to their High-potential employees who perceive a ceiling to their growth within an organization due to nepotistic practices may seek opportunities elsewhere. I understand there was somebody in-house that was wanting to apply for that job that didn't get it. But yet, your uncle shows up as a consultant at $20,000 a month. This talent drain can lead the organization with less skilled individuals, impacting innovation and the ability to complete or compete in the marketplace. Here's an important one, and this is damage for you, Mayor. Damage the organizational reputation. Public knowledge of nepotistic practices can tarnish an organization's reputation, making it harder to attract skilled professionals. If they think that they're...If somebody thinks that they're not gonna have an opportunity because there's a nepotism going around, why would they come here? We're losing out on skilled talent that could be beneficial to the community. It could also potentially impact relationships with clients, investors, and partners who say...who may see much practices...such practices as indicative of poor management or ethical standards. Increased legal risks. I just want to say, it's bad.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
It's bad.
Thank you. Have a great day. Moving on.
We're gonna go to item 6, Approval of Minutes for Special Meeting of March 25, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the two changes I sent to your office, ma'am.
And the ones that I gave to you.
Perfect.
All those in favors, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna go item 7, For Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business, were included in a budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Before we start on that, Mark, I apologize for...I do have a conflict. It'll be 7L, which is what we're about to look at, and then 10E. Both of them with the county.
7L?
Yes, ma'am. Alison Lopez?
And then what else?
10E is in Eric. I don't know.
So that's a lot of family there.
E, Echo, whatever. So those are the two. And then if I was gonna pull out, I, Isaac, and J, Jacob. I don't know.
All right. All right, so let's go ahead and remove 7L. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, let's...7L, Myra?
It's gonna be consideration and possible action to approve an agreement with Cameron County for their Hazard Mitigation Action Plan update.
Motion to approve.
Sorry?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for the record, Commissioner Lopez has abstained from this item. Moving on.
Okay, item 8. We have staff reports and other discussion items.
So it'll be 7I.
7I. Oh, okay. We're moving to 7I, sorry.
7I?
Yes, ma'am.
You're pulling that one.
For the RGV, 7?
I, yes.
Why?
I asked to pull it.
Oh, you did pull it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch that part.
I and J, Isaac and Jacob.
I'll make a motion on 7I.
Okay. Well, he has...the conflict was with L, and then he asked to pull I and J, but we voted on all of them.
Oh. Subject to...
We voted on all of them, because I said remainder of...So, Mark, what do you want me to do?
I just revote, to make the record clear, I guess.
Do you see what I'm saying? He said to pull two out. I didn't hear that he said to pull out.
That's okay. Let's revote to reflect the abstention.
No.
No, he wants to discuss it.
That's not the problem. He wants to discuss two that have already been voted and passed.
Oh, they've been voted and passed.
So we can't pull them, even though I'd asked to?
They were on the consent agenda, but you...
I don't mind, but procedurally...
I think it's up to the mayor's discretion.
So we can...
Reconsider them. Move to reconsider them and vote on them again, if he wants to discuss them again.
Are they gonna change anything?
I just have a couple of questions.
Okay, can't we just have commentary?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so let's just revisit 7I.
On this one, Gabe, we discussed the budget on Monday. If I recall correctly, Transportation had some requests that looked like they tracked with what we're requesting in 7I. Can we add what Transportation's asking for and include it in this grant request to the MPO, so we can save a little money?
No. A lot of the projects that are requested from the MPO are for on-system. A lot of the ones that we're working on for...that have been funded already are on-system, and the MPO has already committed to fund those. Some of the ones that we're working on here are not gonna be eligible for this type of funding.
Okay. All right.
And then on J, that project was...for Royal Park was previously approved by the Commission to submit as a project to Parks and Wildlife, but we missed a deadline because we didn't get the budget in time from Parks. So at this cycle, we're resubmitting it as a project that the Commission has already looked at.
But are we good on...at the same time, if we look at the special minutes, that's when we approved the three, correct? We approved Wilson, we approved the Harlingen Soccer Complex, and then we approved Aurora. Are the other two good to go?
They've already been submitted.
Okay, good. That was my question.
This one, we just didn't make the deadline for that.
All right, thank you.
All right. So we move on?
Moving on.
Okay. We're gonna go to item 8, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, City Manager's Report. Mr. Gonzalez?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, well, item B. 8B is Staff Reports, Presentation by Sergio Mujica on the new city app.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I'm gonna give you an update on the new city mobile app. The purpose of the city app is to enhance communication between the city and its residents, and by actively engaging the community in local events. The new features added to the new mobile app, one of them is sign up and sign in. This creates a more personalized experience to the end user. You can reset or recover your password also, that was not available in the previous app. After you sign in, then you're ready to submit your request. You can track your requests actively by getting notifications as the request moves along the process. If some progress, if it's completed, you get notifications right away. You can use social media accounts to login, authenticate to the app, like your Facebook account, your Apple account, your Google account. You can use your user profile to view the history of your previous requests or your current requests. You could also sign up for push notifications. This is...if you sign up, then the city has the ability now to send mass notifications, emails to the users that register. On top of that, the app gives quick access to the following websites, which are the Park and Recreation's quick access to websites, Facebook, golf courts, online building permits, downtown Harlingen, the animal shelter, the city library, online court payments, visit Harlingen, Convention Center, Harlingen EDC. You can look at upcoming events calendar. You can purchase tickets for online events that the city's having through the app. And at the end, you can watch the new Harlingen TV channel also. We'll be adding more quick links to the app. I think the one I'm gonna add is the rentals for the city buildings. So as you can see, from the current app to the new app, there's enhancements to the design, and it's more accessible.
So what are the points? Do I want a breakfast taco if I had a...
Actually, for each request, you get 10 points. All the requests have the same value. I think the goal was to...the more points you have, eventually have some kind of incentive to the end user, where after 1,000 points, you get, I don't know, a souvenir from the city or something. But it's an automatic process.
I have already have a lot of points, so where's my souvenir?
It's not like Mr. Gaddy's. The idea behind it was, we would eventually have a competition, let's say, within all the districts, and see who gets the most streetlights or whatever. I know Chris and Ruth are super excited about these competitions, because...
Yeah, they usually add up, yeah. So on average, the city gets over a thousandth request a year from citizens. These are the top 10 from 2024. You can see, streetlights, 123, street buttholes, 104, general complaints, 82, rest complaints, 74, court compliance, 68, 69. And so...
Sergio, how many users do you have?
On the...
Oh. There, there we go.
Okay, and moving on to online building permits, which was launched last year in August. You can apply for permits, pay fees, look at your plan reviews and comments from the staff. You can cancel and request inspections. You can print permits that don't require approval. And you can update your contractor information also online, like submit your license renewals. Since August of last year, we had already registered accounts, 264, and over 2,156 logins. This is up to the end of May. So I have a video that was created by the Media Department that shows how easy it is to submit a request. They did really an excellent job on this video, so hopefully you like it.
Hello, Harlingen. We're excited to announce a brand-new app designed to better connect you with your city, Harlingen TX. When you first open the app, you'll be prompted to sign up and create an account. You can use your Google or Apple account, or any preferred email address. Once signed in, you'll land on the main menu, where you'll find a variety of city services. Today, we'd like to highlight one in particular, Citizens Request. As the name suggests, this feature allows you to request assistance directly from the City of Harlingen. To get started, simply tap the plus sign. The app will automatically register your location to help us respond more effectively. Tap Continue, and choose from a list of request types, like submitting a general question, reporting street issues, and more. Next, you'll be asked to upload a photo to help us understand the issue, provide your contact information, so we can follow up if needed. Then, write a brief description to help us process your request more efficiently. And just like that, your request is submitted. You can check the status of your request at any time by opening the Citizens Request tab. Once the job is done, you'll see the status of your request as resolved. This is just one of many ways Harlingen is embracing technology to better service and engage with our community. A quick note, our 2018 app is still available, but to access this new feature, be sure to download the latest version, Harlingen TX. Get started today. Download the app on your iOS or Android device.
So how many users on the app?
On the new one, we have less than 100 downloads. But on the total, I guess we have over 5,000 downloads combined.
From the previous app?
Yes, yeah. That one's been active since 2018, so it's like five years.
So download means they've downloaded to the phone, but do you know how many used...like how many people use it, other than Commissioner Lopez and Bettis?
The new one shows about 350.
Users, like with accounts and all that good stuff?
But I guess my recommendation would be later on to turn off the old app, to force users to download the new one.
That was gonna be my suggestion, but since you said 5,000, that's a big number. Is there a way to notify those that have that app? Is there...since you have an email, or however...whatever they use to download the app?
We put an hourly, actually hourly, 30-minute announcement on the city channel, the city TV, but I guess it needs more publicity. So I was talking to media right now, and I'm asking them to do like a weekly or monthly press release to get the word out and get more users.
But is there a way to email...like, however they use to sign up, is there a way to have...do you have access to that email to email them?
Yeah, we have people that are signing up for mass notifications, are less than 1,000. So I think Facebook probably is the best tool, because since we have like 50,000 followers. So just putting it out there weekly or bi-weekly. Eventually, people will know that this is a much better app than the one that isn't right now.
All right.
I have a question. Is this the same vendor that we've been using, or is this a new vendor?
It's a new vendor. He purchased the old company, the original. That's why we couldn't do an upgrade. He had to do...he did like a brand-new app for us. I would have liked for him to be able to push an update, but that was not possible.
All right. Any other questions for Sergio?
I do agree with Sergio, though, that we need to push the app more, because, like you said, we have very few people on it, and this is a wonderful app. Like Narmah said, I know Daniel and I are constantly using it. It's a great thing. A lot of the calls that we get, I know that I get over the phone, can easily be solved if people just download the app. So I highly encourage everyone that's listening to the meetings, if you don't have the app right now, download it, Android, iOS, just download it. It's very user-friendly, and it's a big help, and eventually, we'll get away...get to giving away the souvenirs.
Can we get at the town hall meetings that are coming up, a little QR code where people that attend can access it?
Yeah, we'll do that. Correct QR code. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 9, Public Hearing. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of the public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizens communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. At this time, we don't have any signups.
Okay, so we'll just get through this really quick. Item 9A, Public Hearing for a Special Use Permit to Allow an Adult Business Tattoo Studio in a General Retail District located at 602 South F Street, Suite D, bearing a legal description of lots 1 through 4, West Harlingen. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing on 9A. Having no one here to speak for or against, or signed up, we'll close the public hearing. Item 9B, Public Hearing for the Voluntary Annexation of 10 Acres of Land out of Block 3, FH Hanley Subdivision located on the east side of Paloma Lane, approximately 2,010.46 feet south of Garrett Road, including all the right-of-way on the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 320.77 feet east of Paloma Lane, and all the right-of-way along Paloma Lane, south of Garrett Road, to and through the property. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on 9B. Having no one here to speak for or against, or signed up, we'll close the public hearing. 9C, Public Hearing Providing for Historic Preservation in the City of Harlingen. Are we doing the public hearing on this one today? Yes? Okay.
Well, I know, but this is the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll do that. 9C, Public Hearing Providing for the Historic Preservation in the City of Harlingen, Providing Definitions and Terms Creating a Historic Preservation Commission, Specifying Its Membership and Tenure, Setting forth Duties and Responsibilities of the Historic Preservation Commission, Defining Duties and Responsibilities of the Historic Preservation Officer, Providing Designation, Criteria, and Procedure for Designating Historic Landmarks and Districts, Establishing Incentive Programs for Historic Preservation, Providing Criteria and Procedure for Obtaining Certificates of Appropriateness, Establishing Design Standards and Guidelines, Creating Minimum Maintenance Standards, Addressing Demolition by Neglect, Providing for Penalty, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for Publication and Effective Date. This time, we'll open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we'll close the public hearing. 9D, Public Hearing Amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Article 6, Section 111, 111 through 142, to add Sections 111 through 142E and F, to regulate certain on-street parking within the City of Harlingen, to prohibit on-street parking at Barton Avenue, to create exceptions, to allow for service of utilizes, and providing for severability. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against, or signed up, we'll close. Having no one here to speak for or against or signed up, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item 10.
Action items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. 10A, is consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special-use permit to allow an adult business tattoo studio in a general retail district located at 602 South F Street, Suite D, bearing a legal description of lots 1 through 4, West Harlingen addition.
In ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen, to issue a special-use permit to Jerry Lopez to allow an adult business in a general retail district located at 602 South F Street, bearing a legal description of lots 1 to 4, West Harlingen addition.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Okay, 10B is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for the voluntary annexation of 10 acres of land out of Block 3 FH Hanley subdivision located at the east side of Paloma Lane, approximately 2,010.46 feet south of Garrett Road, including all the right-of-way on the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 320.77 feet east of Paloma Lane, and all the right-of-way along Paloma Lane, south of Garrett Road, to and through the property.
In ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a 10-acre tract of land out of Block 3 FH Hanley subdivision located on the east side of Paloma Lane, approximately 2,010.46 feet south of Garrett Road, including all of the right-of-way on the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 320.77 east of Paloma Lane, and all of the right-of-way along Paloma Lane, south of Garrett Road, to and through the property, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Okay, we have item 10C, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, providing for historic preservation in the city of Harlingen, providing definitions and terms, creating a historic preservation commission, specifying its membership, tenure, setting forth duties and responsibilities of the historic preservation commission, defining duties and responsibilities of the historic preservation officer, providing designation, criteria, and procedures for designating historic landmarks and districts, establishing incentive programs for historic preservation, providing criteria and procedure for obtaining certificates of appropriateness, establishing design standards and guidelines, creating minimum maintenance standards, addressing demolition by neglect, providing for a penalty, providing for severability clause, and providing for publication and effective date. This item was requested by Commissioner Lopez.
We're going to table this item.
Oh, we're going to table it?
Yes.
Do we need to read the...
I withhold my class.
Okay, do we have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
I would say that if any of the commissioners have their concerns, you can shoot them to Mark as we do some fine tuning. If there's any, like, language concerns you have, shoot them to Mark as we get to know another bit.
Okay, we're moving on to 10D, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Article 6, Section 111-142, to add Section 111-142 ENF, to regulate certain on-street parking within the city of Harlingen, to prohibit on-street parking at the Barton Avenue, to create exception to allow for service of utilities and providing for severability. This item was requested by Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner Perez.
In ordinance amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Article 6, Section 111-142, to add Section 111-142 ENF, to regulate certain on-street parking within the city of Harlingen, to prohibit street parking at Barton Avenue, to create exceptions to allow for service of utilities and providing for severability.
Well, I've been having a bunch of issues on Barton Avenue. You guys recall Mr. Gattia came maybe a year ago. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, commercial that are parking, they're like commercial mechanic shops that park their cars in front of people's houses and leave them there for weeks and months at a time, which causes issues for like our street sweepers, which causes issues with code enforcement, causes issues with, you know, just the, it's an elderly, it's an elderly neighborhood. They're the ones that came to me with the signed petition from the majority of the houses on the street, and so they're asking for this, and I told them I presented and advocate for it. There are two exceptions, and I, I sent them to you, Mark, earlier today. Just want to put an exception there, that, uh, property owners can park in front of their homes between the midnight and 4:00 AM, but no one else, and it's only for Barton Avenue.
Okay, so...
Commissioner, those two exceptions have been incorporated into the ordinance that I handed out.
Oh, thank you.
For the meeting, yes.
And, and so you're not going to, you don't want the curbs painted red or anything? You, you just, you just want the car shops, mechanic shops using the street as a parking lot.
Correct, right, and so there's, if you go in that area, it's where Crockett is, right? So there's Crockett's on, what, Blayon Street, there's a street right in front of it, and then you have, what's that?
It's L Street and then Barton, uh, intersection, there's that intersection.
I believe you're correct, Commissioner. So there's L Street and then there's Barton, that they hit like a T intersection, and what they've even been doing is they've been parking cars right on the corner of that T, so when you're pulling up, it's hard to see around, uh, to see if you're going to take a ride if there's cars coming at you or whatnot like that.
Are they parking cars or they're parking commercial vehicles?
Cars, like, so your car's broken down, right? Like, you need to swap out the transmission or something.
So there's a mechanic shop nearby?
Like, two.
And that, the ordinance, the, it's fine that they're there, like the...
No. So you had to call code enforcement out there to put up the stickers on the car, hey, you need to move it. If it's a non-working vehicle, you can't be parking...
No, 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 saying the zoning, there's a mechanic shop and it's in a neighborhood?
The grandfathered in already.
So the zoning is commercial. It would allow it. They don't have a CO, so we've already dealt with it. They should not be in operation anymore.
Okay, so, because, yeah, it sounds to me like there's a bigger problem here.
But the zoning is commercial. It's commercial and light industry.
So they're not in operation anymore?
No.
Okay, so then they would not need this. Um, my concern is the precedent that we're setting because there's a lot of people in the community that don't want people to park in front of their houses, and it's a public street. And so if you do for one, then you've got to do for all, but that's problematic if you have, you know, cars that are being worked on and a mechanic shop and they're constantly in front of your house. It's inconvenient, it's frustrating, um, and that shouldn't happen, and I think that's why we have zoning in, in place. But if they're not going to be in operation anymore, shouldn't that resolve the problem?
As one of two mechanic shops, as I know.
So if there is one there, they are allowed to be there? It, it, the zoning is commercial, it would allow it. Now, we can double-check to make sure they have their proper permits. Um, I do know one of the cars got towed to the back of one of the property owners and they tried to clean it up some. But have you been getting further complaints, Commissioner, from them?
Uh, the ones I've been forwarding to.
Okay. Yeah, so that area is light industry and commercial, so there's a mixture of residential and businesses as well, which is where the problem is happening.
I wonder if there's a better way to solve the issue than to have an ordinance that's saying within this one street, because what you're saying is nobody can park there. It's not specifically saying, I mean, and, and that was what I read when I saw it. Technically, then the owners themselves couldn't park there, but that, that's good that you added that in there, but technically, you're opening the door to these people calling and saying, hey, the neighbor across the street is parked there, calling the cops that they're parked there.
Yeah, that's why we made that window 12:00 AM to 4:00 AM, right? So it's a pretty late window.
But it's a public street. And I'm just, I don't know, I'm trying, I, I think that, I understand, I could appreciate that. Maybe there's something in ordinance that says if you've got mixed industri, you know, if it's a light industrial and there's, there's neighborhood, there's a neighborhood nearby, then if you're going to have a business here, you cannot occupy spaces in front of homes. Maybe that's the better ordinance.
The one thing that we can enforce is that if they're parking cars that are not operable, we can tag those and eventually tell them.
But we already have that.
We've been doing that. Yeah, we've been doing that. And so it's like every month, as you guys see, I'm sending out that email, and I'm getting another complaint, so I'm getting more complaints, right? So it's non-stop. For one year, I've been working with code enforcement, worked with PD, worked with Public Works to try to resolve this.
And they keep doing it even though they're having to pay to get them out of, um, that's ridiculous.
That's why. I think this is the final straw, right? And that's why I say we keep it just to Barton, and only because I got a petition from so many people, and only because it's an elderly neighborhood, right? How many, how many signatures were on the petition?
And it's not in here in the, our packet. We don't have anything, there's nothing in here other than the ordinance.
Were you going to say something, Sol?
No. So basically, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, to your point. Um, yes, we, we do, so if the vehicle has been parked there, but the officer approves it operable, we cannot tow it. Now, they have taken care of the junk vehicles that are just trashed completely, but if, let's say you have three cars, because some people have multiple cars.
Right.
And they don't have a garage, they don't have space to park in the driveway, they kind of have to park it in the street.
And it could be the person across the street that's parking there.
Correct. Or some families have two, three families living inside their home, so they have a multitude of cars, and they don't have enough space, so then they start to park on the street as well.
Just forward it to y'all. You do? Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, this is one day I didn't bring my...
Excuse me, Commissioner Lopez, we're looking at this one just being on this street, on vehicles that are on the street, correct?
Yes, it's 18, 18 signatures.
18?
Yeah. I forward it to Mark and Gabe right now, if you guys want to forward it to the rest of the commission.
I just wonder if you can, if there can be an ordinance that presents all of the citizens of Harlingen from situations. You are a great commissioner, I'll give you that. You are engaged, you talk to the people in your community.
I know.
And, 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 no, you, you, you really are, and so you have a, a pulse on the district and you know, but I guarantee you that there's probably others that are, are experiencing this issue, and now you've created, um, a precedent to say, okay, well, you know what? They did it over there, let's do a petition, and we're going to do it on this other street, and then this other street. And now you've got an ordinance that says not on this street, this street, this street. How do you keep up with that? And who's enforcing that, right? And so if you have an ordinance that speaks to mixed-use areas and saying that you can't do it anywhere in the city, where you can't, because there's a difference between the neighbor or somebody visiting, staying over, they've got kids, maybe, you know, they come and visit them, maybe it's like Ms. Moniz when she was here and all these people are coming for one, for one reason, and so they're going to be parking down the street. This is, you know, how many times you have a barbecue and people are parked, you know, maybe they spend the night and they don't go home, and they park there, and so all of those people would be illegally parked, but if you say, if you're running a business, you cannot use these spaces, then that's different. Do you see the distinct, I'm trying to distinguish between those two. That way, anyone that is, is having that problem within the city, it no longer becomes a problem because we have an ordinance that speaks to that, because these are not people's vehicles, these are cars that are being worked on, right? Or is that not...
We do have an elderly parking...
I looked that up, yeah.
Zone, but that's $75 to apply.
And it's like a doctor's reason, right, or something?
Yeah, yeah.
And then they have their own, like, that's their space.
Yeah, it's, we paint it orange, so only, you have to have, and you have to have a sticker to park there, but I'm not sure if they want to apply for that.
It's a whole neighborhood, right?
It doesn't sound like that it is a medical issue. It sounds like it's, it's frustrating, and it's annoying, and it's inconvenient, and it's inconsiderate. I just, I'm, I'm, you know, there, I'm sure that code gets called all the time. There's somebody parked here in front of my house.
All the time. They're parked in front of the trash can, they didn't pick up my trash, they're parked in front of the mailbox, the mailman can't get in. Peop, we can't control how people park. Now, we would wish people would be good neighbors and good citizens, but that's not always the case.
And you always say, this is a public street, we don't have jurisdiction.
Correct.
So now you're changing it for one street in the city.
Do you have any other ideas, Sol, that we could...
See, because of the zoning of the neighborhood, it does make it a little bit difficult. That is a perfect example of a mixed-use neighborhood, because the, the front part of it is commercial and then the tail end of it is light industry. Now, that neighborhood has been there before the zonings came into place. Granted, the type of business is what's becoming problematic. So in that particular situation, the property owner told the tenant, we'll take care of everything, and they didn't. So when we went in, they didn't have a CO. We advised them of this, and they just decided to close their business because they didn't want to go through all the trouble of obtaining the CO.
So it should solve the problem?
It should. And essentially, if they're going to open up something there, their parking has to be within the property itself.
And that's when you can control it and say, you can't open here because you don't have sufficient parking.
Correct. And because they are abutting residences, we can also add a buffer, um, a six-foot solid face buffer, to kind of mitigate the noise and the, the aesthetics of it.
Is it possible to rezone that back to residential?
We could do a city-initiated rezoning. The last one we did didn't fare too well, because it comes down to the property owners themselves, and if they're in opposition, that pretty much kills it.
Are there any other businesses there other than this one that's been closed down?
Yeah, so if you drive down it, you know where this is.
It's right where Blanquitas is at?
Remember the old Palm Lounge? Okay, you know where Waterworks is? Right across the street, there's that Palm Lounge?
Oh, I know where it's at, yeah, yeah.
The bar, yeah. And then it's that street that's right there, so the whole left side is right off of the railroad tracks. So you can tell that there were the old, you know, I don't know, like fruit, where you, where you'd chip fruit out from and all that type of stuff. So it's all warehouses on one side of the street, on the southern part, and on the northern side, it's all houses.
Okay, I know.
And there's like two or three houses on the southern side, and it's just warehouse, warehouse, and, because I had them install speed humps, because people were just like flying back and forth as well.
I think I remember when there's one lady that lives there and has a really cute yard, right?
Yeah.
And she's elderly.
And I can see what you're talking about with the vehicles, because I looked up the street on Google Maps, and then I saw a Bronzwell PD truck there, and I was just like, what's Bronzwell PD doing here? But it's, it's, I'm assuming it was one of their vehicles that was messed up.
It was getting worked on, yeah.
There's Hummers there, like, in the Palm Lounge old parking lot, there's a bunch of things, and there was a bunch of just trucks lined up and, uh, up and, up and down the street. I'm fine working on it, right? Like, if you can figure out a better way to do it...
You'll figure out it. I, I just, I want, I don't want it to, I, I, I think this is a unique situation. Typically, I would say absolutely not, because it's a public street, but this is a problem because this is in a residential neighborhood, um, like the rest of, you know, that are fortunate enough to have the zoning in place to not have these issues. So, yes, but there are lots of areas around town that are like that from, that are grandfathered in, that are, that could be problems. But I'm confident that Sol can come up with something that, um, speaks to that, and, and it probably needs to be very specific and addressing those, um, older zoned areas, and the language has to be very clear, that commercial business owners cannot utilize any, um, public street parking in front of homes or, or, you know, and I would say at any time, not just in, at overnight, because that's not what it's intended for. You're, you're, because I know right now, if you want to open a business, you have to have a certain amount of parking, right?
Correct, unless you're in the downtown district.
So, right, right, well, yeah, that's a whole other animal. But, so if they don't have enough parking, then that, they need a different place to open that business.
Correct. Uh, we can, we can look at something and find a solution, because to the mayor's point, yes, if we go down this route, we're opening a can of worms with all the other streets in the city for the, to do the exact same thing.
That is not offensive to me, because I lived in Houston for law school, and they have that in Houston. You can't park on public streets like the neighborhoods.
You can't.
No, you cannot. In the Heights, you'd get towed if you parked on the side, right? And the streets are like in, in your side of town, the west side, and in your part...
Oh, but when they're super narrow streets.
They're narrow, and they, they would have the bar ditches, you can't park on the They're narrow, and they, they would have the bar ditches, you can't park on the side or they'll tow you, right? And at the island, they have the same, the same thing. You can't park on the side of the street.
It just wouldn't work in our community. Think about, how many times have you gone to a barbecue, and there's people that are parked all the way down the street? Now, you couldn't be able to do that anymore.
From twelve to four.
You're saying only twelve to four?
Correct.
So what about the people that are, like, they go to the house, and they have some, a couple of drinks, and they leave their car there, because they don't want to drink and drive? There's just, I just think it's a, I think there's a difference between the narrow streets that Gabe doesn't like, right, for that same purpose, doesn't want to change it, because...
I don't like kids with Purdue Street.
Yes, yeah, so, so, so I get that. I just, I don't know. And we're not Houston, we're Harlingen. It's just a big, it's a big difference.
Do you think you can come up with something by next meeting?
Sure.
That I just make a motion to table this?
I think that's a good idea.
Second, we'll make a motion to table, get us something in two weeks, please.
I will.
Thank you.
You got a motion in a second there.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10E, consideration and possible action to approve two invoices from Cameron County Elections Department for the November 5th, 2024, District 3, 4, and 5, regular city elections, and the December 14th, 2024 runoff elections. We have Remy Garza.
All I can tell you is this is gonna be good.
What's, what's the bill? What's the, uh, give me the punchline.
There, there are two invoices before you this evening. Uh, the, the first is for the election that was held on November, uh, 5th. Uh, that balance due, uh, came out to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three seventy. Um, and then for the runoff election, uh, was a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four fifty-one. Um, and, uh, I, I know that, that, um, these, these figures, uh, are significantly higher than what was originally presented in the estimate to the city. Um, however, there were some, uh, factors that came into play, wha, after those numbers had been up, um, as well as our inexperience of forecasting the cost for the City of Harlingen's elections, because in the past, they'd always shared those costs with the school district, uh, because they were in May. Um, one of the, the contributing factors, obviously, in the, the difference in the estimate and what was ultimately expended, was in the area of personnel, and in supplies, and in, um, the equipment. As you're aware, Cameron County, uh, moved to the countywide voting system, and that, um, process was approved by the Secretary of State, sort of late in the process, as we moved towards planning and, and getting ready for the November election. Uh, as a consequence, uh, in order to make sure that we had our, our poll workers and, uh, the proper support for it, uh, there were, there were a lot of extra people that were brought on board to make sure that, that there was no disruption in the voting process on Election Day. Um, those expenses, you know, ranged anywhere from what we'd normally have four individuals that would move around, as we call them Rangers. Uh, there were usually four that worked during early voting and on Election Day, but we had six during early voting, and we had ten on Election Day, because we were concerned about the printers that were printing up the ballots at each of the polling locations. Uh, als, also, uh, with the new ballot on election system, uh, there was a lot of additional training that was one-on-one, uh, for the workers, plus we also, you know, we're looking at a presidential election, so there's an also significant increase in the amount of personnel that are hired, uh, to work during early vote, which is the most, where the costs normally accumulate, um, and on Election Day. Of course, um, you know, when you, when you, you can look at this, uh, from various angles. You can look at this from the perspective of, well, you, you underestimated what it was gonna take in order to conduct our city's election. Um, there were other entities that were conducting an election at the same time. Um, however, um, the, the, their costs were also increased, uh, just because of the extremely high voter turnout. Um, when you look at the overall cost of the election, it was one point six million dollars, uh, was expended for the November presidential election. Um, Cameron County, of course, you know, was taking the largest share of that. And we, we break down our costs based on the number of precincts that each jurisdiction has, and it's sort of prorated out, and they pay a percentage. Harlinsens represented twelve point, uh, four, four percent. Um, and so, of the one point six million, your overall cost, if we done it straight through, the percentage would have been about two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. But recognizing that that was, um, a significant expense, um, and would have been well, well, well out of the range as to what we felt we could, we could attribute to the City of Harlingen, we went through the bill, you know, literally supplies every single item that we could identify, that, uh, would be something that we could, we could characterize as an expense that the county would have to take, uh, because of either the late notification from the Secretary of State's office on the countywide system, on, um, the steps that I took in order to ensure that the election was administered, you know, fairly, and, and that there was no, no disruption to the voters at any of the polling locations. Um, so, one of the things that we did was we reduced the personnel cost, um, by twenty-five percent. Uh, rather than assessing the entire amount that, that normally would have been allocated to the City of Harlingen, we, um, reduced it by the county taking on twenty-five percent of the overall cost of that, which, there were nine hundred and something thousand dollars of personnel costs, um, overall, uh, for, for all, for all the jurisdictions. What that did is it brought down, um, your als, the overall total of the bill to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three, all the different things that we, that we did, which represents the City of Harlingen's share of that one point six million dollars of being ten percent versus the twelve percent. Um, another, uh, way you could look at this, if, if you, if you wanted to, um, look past the, the, the actual increase in cost between what your May twenty-two election and your November twenty-twenty-four election looked like, um, you paid approximately thirteen dollars per voter, because of the turnout. Um, for the November election, it's much more efficient, because there's such a higher turnout, um, you're actually paying eight dollars, uh, per individual voter in your overall election. And I know that's not, uh, something that, that you take comfort in, but I assure you that the expenses that we, we incurred were necessary and reasonable for what was happening, uh, for that November presidential election. I'm prepared to answer any questions that y'all might have with respect to that.
Okay, so, so the punchline is one sixty-eight to the City of Harlingen?
One sixty-eight, uh, six twenty-three for the November election, and a hundred and eleven thousand, um, uh...
Right, 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 but after a twenty-five percent discount.
Right.
So it's one sixty-eight?
One sixty-eight, yes, versus two hundred and, and eight.
Okay. The next election, or the, in years down the road, when it coordinates again with the presidential election, will the county be discounting, or will have to play, pay the whole cost?
Well, uh, there's two things that have happened since that, uh, election. Uh, one is that we were able to do your runoff election, and so we have a really good idea as to what it costs to, to, if Harlingen was by itself, run the election, which is at a hundred and eleven thousand. Granted, it was only in three districts, uh, and it wasn't a citywide election, so there's gonna be some minor adjustments to that. Second is that we did, we conducted the May election, which was a countywide election, included the county, and included several jurisdictions, almost as many jurisdictions in November. Our current estimates, uh, for the, the cost of that elections, um, where you saw one point six for the November presidential election, and you saw the, um, and compared it to May, the May election right now is at about nine hundred thousand dollars of overall election cost. The personnel costs were nine hundred thousand in November, uh, and right now, they're, we're looking at somewhere close to four hundred to eighty thou, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we've already, we've already figured out how we can reduce the cost, so that the, the cost will be much less.
So what does a poll watcher make?
Uh, a poll worker, um, we, actually, that's one of the reasons there was an increase. We, our, our site supervisors during regularly voting make seventeen dollars an hour, uh, and our clerks earn fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, so if somebody's looking for a sod gig?
Uh, there are, uh, people that do, uh, come back year after year and use that additional income.
Yeah.
In the community, uh, it circulates, so to speak.
Didn't they, I, I think, um, the ledge pass, that elections now have to be in November?
There were, there, there, it was proposed in the bill, but the November election, the, the forcing all jurisdictions to move to November didn't pass. What they did was they opened up the window again for jurisdictions that would like to move from May to November. They have that opportunity again. Every once in a while, they sort of open up the window to move that, uh, over. But they have to make the decision by, uh, the end of this year.
Okay.
If they want to move to, to, to the November election. So, I mean, I think, and I think, uh, Commissioner Bettis has talked about this, uh, when you look at the overall turnout and the participation in the election, where you go from, um, you know, like, six thousand people to twenty-one thousand people that are participating in the, the process. Uh, the convenience of the countywide, um, you know, is, is without question, the voters really, uh, really, really appreciated it. In fact, I think at one point, we did an, an estimate that there was only one location that didn't have voters from other precincts vote on Election Day there. Um, fifty-four percent of the voters voted outside of their normal precincts, um, which is, you know, a major convenience. Um, the City of Harlingen, um, you know, hasn't, since we've, uh, the Cultural Arts Center, um, has proved to be the second most active, uh, polling location. Where it used to be Wilson Road was where people were voting. But, you know, the, the city itself has, you know, taken steps to make those early voting locations more accessible. You, City Hall was added, the Harlingen Convention Center was added. Uh, and each of those locations, you have to recognize, can run to, for the election, represents about a twenty-five or, or, you know, twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollar expense, because early voting is, is so long, um, and the overtime that's, that's associated with it.
For the runoff election, um, this one that just passed in Harlingen, did you have the breakdown of how many people voted outside of Harlingen?
Um, I, I didn't run that election. I did, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't run those numbers for that election, I apologize.
Yes, you did, yes.
I left out a few words, I apologize. Maybe in another dimension.
That's how rumors get started, Remy.
I apologize, but I, I can, I can definitely check that.
I'm just, just curious, because of the, the expense, it seems like a hundred and eleven thousand just for the, the runoff, and then there was very little, um, turnout.
Yeah, that, yeah, that you don't want me to do the cost per voter for that one.
Right, right.
But on average, if you put the two elections together, you're still below what the May election costs.
I, I think this is money well spent. Um, I know the, the ticket price is higher than we thought, but I don't think you can put a price tag on our elections. Um, I think you guys did an, an excellent job. Um, what you were saying about opening it up, I agree with you, where voters can vote anywhere, that, that's, I've been wanting that for years. And the fact that we did that now made it a lot more convenient, um, for people to vote. I think that was a great thing, and encouraged a lot more people to go out and vote, and that's why we broke the records. So thank you for, for what your work and what your team did. You guys did great.
Thank you. And I, and I should mention that now, the, the, one of the, the issues with respect to the, the runoff was that we hadn't been approved for the countywide election to be used during that. We didn't have a successful status for the, the runoff. But now we do have that. So any future elections that are held in Harlingen, people will be able to vote anywhere, and you'll be able to place polling locations anywhere within your community, and not have to worry about those boundaries that had previously existed, because I know we had some trouble, uh, this, this, during that runoff. But that issue's been resolved.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item F, 10F, is consideration and possible action to approve a resolution approving one-year action plan budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, year fifty-one of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program, in fiscal year 2025 through 2026, year thirty-one of the Home Investment Partnership Program Home.
Mayor, we're gonna table this?
Right. So can we get a motion to table? They weren't...
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Item 10G is consideration and possible action to approve a request for twenty-one thousand dollars in matching funds from Region One Education Center in support of a teacher certification program for paraprofessionals. We have EDC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Great job, Orlando.
Item 11 is board appointments, specifically appointed or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute ordinance or by laws.
Gabe, I had a question.
Yes.
On the boards. When, because I know last, when we were, Monday, when we had the, um...
Budget?
The budget thing, you said the 4B's gonna meet. When are they gonna meet?
We, uh, I'm having, uh, Myra check with them for, it's on Thursday, Thursday after, it's seventeenth.
So it's gonna be after our meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, now she's checking with the 4B to see if they're available.
Yeah, because I know my, my pick resigned because he...
It's gonna be after our meeting?
Yes, after your meeting. Doesn't have to be before, because that's just, uh, um, it's, it's for, uh, grant requests.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, we can always come back and have a budget amendment to actually take that out of the fund balance.
We, but this, they will meet before our last budget workshop?
Uh, no.
No? Can we, can't, they don't, they can't? I just would like some, you know, confirmation that, that the things that we're not gonna include in the budget, that they're gonna...
Well, we can schedule another meeting for the twenty-first of July, which is after that. So we have one scheduled for the seventh, which is next week.
Mm-hmm.
And we can skip the fourteenth and have it on the twenty-first, so they can meet first, and we'll know if they're willing to do that or not.
I think that that would be better. What do y'all think?
Want to move that one again, please?
Uh, to move the fourteenth, uh, budget workshop to the twenty-first? They're, they're both Mondays.
That's a Monday, I won't be here.
You won't be here? Um, Robert, we can still meet on the twenty-eighth. Where are you, Robert?
Well, I'm just saying, because there was a, a, there was a considerable amount of park projects.
It's about, well, the ones that we have to have are the two point two million, which is the grants that need the matching fund.
Matching.
Yeah. The others, we had extras. We don't, we don't have to do all of them, but we can try to do as many as we can.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that total was about five million.
And the meeting doesn't have to be like on a Monday, it could be any, any day.
Okay, so, we, we can, we can meet anytime in July for a budget workshop and still be fine?
Yes, anytime in July. Uh, we, we received the certified totals on July twenty-fifth, and then after that, we do the calculation, and the deadlines are, are kinda tight, like, they have to be those deadlines.
Maybe we could have our, our workshop, and we can work on as if we are, um, assuming that that's going to be the case, and then i- if it's not...
We, we can, Commissioner, are you gonna be out the entire week of the twenty-first?
Mike?
Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday.
And there's a, right on the twenty-fourth, Myra's looking to schedule something.
But, Myra?
Yeah.
No, that's, uh, San Juan for the audit, but they meet at noon.
Yes, yeah, that's it, noon.
Oh, okay.
So we can do it on the twenty-fourth, too, if you'll be back by then. That's, is it twenty-fourth, the Wednesday? It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll be here for that.
Commissioners are both...
You're not gonna be here?
It's my birthday, but we can do it.
Oh, happy birthday. You'll be doing great work.
Yeah, no, town hall, my anniversary, we can have this meeting on my birthday.
You heard this, we need to not make him come here on his birthday, because his wife's gonna be upset.
Didn't you say it was a labor of love?
It is a labor of love, it is.
All right.
I'll bring you a little cake.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, because I'll be gone twenty-third, twenty-third in Austin for a campus safety conference when I get back. I get back the evening of the twenty-third, so I can do the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay. Uh, Commissioner, are you available, twenty-fourth? Hi, new Commissioner?
Okay, Harlingen Beautiful's meeting's on the twenty-fourth, right?
Okay, we...
There it is. You two have a meeting.
I do?
Yeah, you guys have a...
Oh, yes, we do.
Five-thirty?
We do?
Uh, on July twenty-fourth.
That's right. On my calendar. No, no, that's good. I wanna, I need to go to that.
Okay.
That's at five-thirty?
Yes.
Well, let's like, let's just look at our calendars. We're having another one on Monday, right? Another, next week? Yes, Mayor. Okay, and then at that point, we can schedule the next one.
Okay, and we haven't gotten confirmation back from the 4B that they can meet on the seventeenth, so it could all be moved.
So, yeah, let's just look to, we'll be here again on the seventh.
And the meeting with the 4B mayor is not gonna be a joint meeting, it's just gonna be with the 4B.
Correct.
But we're gonna post and attend and participate, so that the commission can be there and...
Why don't we do this? Uh, why don't each of the commissioners email, uh, Myra, the days in July they cannot meet. For example, the two days you're out of town, the days you're out of town. And if you don't email her, she's gonna presume you're open those days, okay?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and preferably have that done by the end of this week, so that way on seven, on Monday, on the seventh, when we're here, we can, she can propose the date that's available to everybody. Got it? All right, let's move on.
Did I answer your question, Commissioner? I, I don't...
When is the Ford, that's what we're trying to figure out, when the 4B's gonna meet?
Oh, yes, the seventeenth. That's the date we're shooting out to them, but we won't know until later this week, when we get a response from everybody.
Okay. Okay.
Or, you have any board appointments?
I want to reappoint Joe Wagner to the downtown improvement board.
Okay. Uh, Daniel?
None.
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 I'm going to appoint Marcus Cruz to the 4B board.
All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion to approve Joe Wagner and Harvard Commissioner Perez.
Marcus Cruz.
Marcus Cruz to the 4B board.
Did we get his application? He was already, no, but he's been a board member already for the...
P&amp;D?
No, yeah, P&amp;Z, boom.
Okay. Well, you need to do, there's, just like I told Commissioner Monales, you make sure just to send us the application, and moving forward, let's have the applications before, even if there are reappointments.
Yeah, well, I hadn't intended, I didn't want to, I didn't want to appoint him yet, but I want to make sure I have a pick, because my pick, John, he's not, he resigned because he's, he moved, he moved. So he's not on the board, so then, so I was asking about the meeting, because I, yes, I kept pronouncing his last name.
Givara.
Givara. So I wanted to make sure I had a, a, a appointee there, but, um...
John Givara moved?
Yeah, he moved.
He moved his house and moved out of town.
Yeah.
I'm vicariously traveling through him everywhere he goes.
He's in Houston.
Um, okay, so, uh, so yes, can you make sure Marcus sorts that out, sends it to the commission, and he has been on the P&amp;Z before, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries unanimously. Moving on.
We're going to move on to item twelve, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Item twelve A, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, for instance, two, to receive attorney-client consultation protected by the attorney-client communication privilege. Item twelve B, pursuant to Texas Government